I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Watcom County Council for October 14th, 2014, and we have the roll call, please.
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Sam Crawford?
Here.
Pete Cremmon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Carl Wymer?
Here. People will stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of quick announcements. If you've brought your cellphone, if you can put it on silent, like I'm trying to do mine, that'd be great, you won't hear all the weird noises. And if you're handing out paperwork during the public hearings or during the open session, if you can make sure that the clerk here up front gets a copy also, that would be great. And I also want to announce one more time that we have an opening on the Planning Commission right now. A gentleman resigned, so we're accepting applications to a vacant position on the Watcom County Planning Commission. Applicants must be qualified, registered voters in District Three. Appointments will be for a partial term ending January 31st, 2018. Applications are located on the back of the room on the table, if anybody's looking for one. Applications are also available in the county council office or on our website. Please note that the application deadline is 10:00 a.m. next Tuesday, October 21st, so make sure you get them into the council office by then. Nominations and appointment are tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, October 28th, at the regular county council meeting. There's more information about what the Planning Commission does on our website. First order of business is, we just came from a committee of the whole meeting, and we had one earlier too. Our earlier one was a discussion regarding the county council's proposal to add a policy analyst to its staff in 2015, and the one we just came out of was a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding pending litigation, Hurst et al. versus Watcom County Growth Management Hearings Board case number 12-2-0013. First order of business is approval of a couple of sets of minutes, the minutes for the regular county council meeting for August 5th and the regular county council for September 16th. Is there a motion?
I say move.
Mr. Cremmon has moved to approve those. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. We're going to move right into our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. The first one is an ordinance terminating open space timberland classification and consolidating timberland classification with designated forest land classification and declaring land previously classified as timberland to be designated forest land. And I'm going to open the public hearing. We talked about this this morning in natural resources, so I don't think we need a staff report. Open the public hearing. There is no one signed up on the sign-up sheet, but if anybody wants to speak to this, we're certainly glad to hear from you. Every person gets three minutes to talk to this issue, and you'll get a warning at 30 seconds. You know the drill.
I know the drill. Thank you. Max Perry, Watcom County. And I sat through the forest land and the change from the open space to the designated forest land, and the only thing I was going to call exception to was Mr. Brown, Councilman, Red Brown, stated that the Forest Committee, Forest Advisory Committee, had spoken in favor of this, and being a member of the Forest Advisory Committee, I don't think the Forest Advisory Committee as a whole has had a chance to discuss this or talk about it other than emails passing back and forth and things like this. And some of them, I think, are in favor, so perhaps Mr. Brown had talked to someone that were in favor. But the only thing I had a question on is going from the, to the small acreage, just 20 and less, and wanting a forest plan for it, and I can see your reasoning for that too, so that you don't have somebody taking an easy out and paying less taxes and not ever expecting to raise timber on it. But also, I would caution you too, that with this forest plan, I don't know what it totally entails, but Lewis County, we have some property down there, and they've already done this, so we got a registered letter on that saying that our land is now in designated forest land. So it says there's nothing changed on it and nothing different. So I would just say that for the small acreages, if you're really looking to add to the timber base in the county due to taking 2,000 acres out for the parts there, then don't make it too tough on the people to be able to do that. And Jack Petrie's, I think, gave a memo to you folks on this and copied, I copied on that too. And the small lot owners have some other considerations, and they don't know clear down the road, whereas if you have a large timber base up on the side of the mountains, that, yeah, that's going to be always in timber. So I would just say, don't make it too tough for the little folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to us on this issue? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Brown?
Just, I'm not sure where the confusion is, but for clarity, I forwarded the materials to two representatives of the Forestry Advisory Committee and had responses back from them. I have not had a formal response from the Forestry Advisory Committee.
Okay, so a couple of members, not everybody. Ms. Brenner?
I move approval, and I would like to speak to what Mr. Perry brought up.
Are you moving the green substitute version?
The green substitute version.
Okay.
And I'm trying to remember, oh, is this the one that's got the...
Well, this has, this...
Because we just got this.
Yeah, this includes the concern about we're requiring people who are designating this as forest land, so we're making clear in here that we're not designating this as critical forest land, we're just converting it. It doesn't have the forest plans in it.
It doesn't.
No.
Why not?
Because we haven't got there yet.
Oh, we would do that now. Okay, well, I want to speak to, I move it forward, and I'm going to make the amendment to require when it's first classified or reclassified as designated forest land on 20 acres or less, that there would be a timber management plan. And when we combine these two, that's what's already required the way it was, and I do support, I know we want to have, you know, some more base to make up for what we've lost, but what I don't want to do, and what worries me, is on smaller parcels, I don't think everybody has any intention of doing timber management, which means harvesting too, and that concerns me, and it's a lot more apt to happen on a smaller piece than on a larger piece. So I think it's good, since they're getting a tax break, that it's good to have that in there too. And, I mean, I think it makes a big difference.
Okay, so you moved the substitute version for approval, which takes care of Mr. Petrie's concern that we had heard about earlier today.
Right. Oh, yeah.
And you're interested in the farm plans, or not farm plans, forest plans too, and I understand staff probably has some additional information about that for us this evening.
Yeah, Erin Oswee, Watcom County Planning. We, since we met this morning and had a conversation about legal staff indicating with their preliminary comments that it would be legally permissible to add that requirement as a mandate in the ordinance to require timber management plans, there was some further review, and at this point, it's not certain that that actually would be legally permissible to make the ordinance more restrictive than the actual statute, which does give the option to the assessor. So that's kind of, that's where the substitute is coming from without having that language in it.
Okay, because what you handed out this morning specifically says that the county can do that.
It says, may require, application for designated forest land may require a timber management plan depending on the county requirements. Well, we're the county, and we make the requirements. It doesn't say depending on the assessor's requirements. It says depending on the county requirements. And I appreciate that our assessor at this point is going to do that, but as somebody said earlier when we were talking about this, our assessor won't always be there. There'll be another assessor, and another one after that. I think it's a very important thing to have in the designation.
The question is, and first of all, I will state, I am not the person analyzing this particular issue, but I participated in some discussions in our office today about this issue. And the question is whether or not the council, the legislative authority, can take that discretion away from the assessor. And that matter preliminarily, I think the opinion is that the assessor has that authority and the legislative authority can't remove that from the assessor. I'm just cautioning you, it's under further review, I believe, at this time. Royce Buckingham is the one who represents planning and is involved with working on that issue.
So, quick question, just regarding that. If we pass the green version, which doesn't include what Ms. Brenner wants, can we come back at any point in the future and add that? Once it's clarified?
No, it's out of our hands. Then it's, it's in the assessor's hands. This is our only bite, and I want to...
Well, no.
No, that was the question I had for the attorney.
Right, right. No, I think, because it's already, now, did this go before the Planning Commission? I'm just trying to think about the process.
No, it would not be required to go before.
Okay, so, yes.
Because this was a taxation issue.
Yes, you can, you can bring it up at any time and amend it whenever you want to.
Ms. Brenner?
It says right here, this is from the State, Washington State Department of Revenue. I have to think they understand state issues regarding the counties. First, it says designated, applications for designated forest land may require a timber management plan depending on the county requirements. Then down further, it says, the assessor may also require a timber management plan to determine continued eligibility, when, and it gives all these things. So it does acknowledge what the assessor may do. This is a completely separate thing, and we do have the right to do that as a county.
Well, I think the RCW specifically puts that decision in the assessor's hands.
It says, and the part of the RCW that I read, it said "may," but it doesn't mean that the county can't make a requirement anyway.
Well, there's a legal issue there, and it's being reviewed, so at this point, I would advise you not to add that to the ordinance.
Well, then I think we should hold off on the ordinance because I don't agree that we could amend it. Once, it's out of, in fact, it said, it was very clear, and Keith said that, nothing comes to us anymore on timber, on timber, nothing goes to the council. No hearings, no nothing, it goes to him.
But you can always change your own ordinance.
The applications don't come to us anymore, but the ordinance setting it up can be changed.
Right.
I don't know.
So you moved approval of the green ordinance. Does that still stand?
No.
Okay.
I moved to hold it till we have the legal justification for...
Doesn't somebody have to move it in order to hold it?
I already moved it, and now I move to hold it.
I suppose that works. All right, so we have a motion to hold until we get the further legal opinion about the timber plans.
Till we get the final clarification, and I'd like to see all the statutes, you know, everything that they're taking it from, too.
Any discussion on the motion to hold? Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I'd say let's just hold it and wait till we have the information instead of voting on it, and then reopening the whole thing again, reeducating ourselves on the issue. Let's just wait till we have everything we need.
Is there any problem with us holding this for two weeks or a month? No is the indication we're getting from staff. Any other discussion on the motion to hold?
Just that you could introduce, you could introduce the substitute for another hearing in two weeks. That was actually the intent of the draft ordinance that you have in front of you now.
Since we've made a substantive change to it since this morning.
Correct. And then we give legal staff time to rethink that whole issue from the previous, what's in the memo, and that memo is from, based on, you know, the original guidance we received, so, but after time of rethinking that, and it would give more time to legal counsel to actually give you some more advice on that issue, and then another hearing could be held, and then the council could take action with considering that new legal opinion.
Okay, but if we introduce this this evening, and then we change it two weeks from now, and then we're into the same cycle again?
What I recommend is that the legal notice, and I did provide some language, that indicates that you would be considering an ordinance to terminate the timberland, joining, you know, merging it with the forest land, and also would be considering, at another public hearing, the possibility of adding language that requires a timber management plan. So it would be, it would be noticed as such, giving you the option to do that at that time, whether you do it or not at that time, you would be able to consider the new legal opinion that came forward in the meantime.
Okay, so we introduced this this evening, but in the notice, it would say that at the same hearing, we're going to consider...
Exactly.
Forest land management plans.
Correct.
Does that work?
Works for me.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, it doesn't work for me, because again, it's going to go out to have two hearings. If we make a substantive change, you can say all you want, we're considering other things, what is in the ordinance is what the hearing is on, and if we, if we make any substantive change to what is in the ordinance, we would have to have another hearing. I don't want to have two hearings on this.
Let's ask our lawyer that. If we introduce this one, but in the public notice, we say we're also considering the inclusion of forest plans, are we covered?
I think you're covered.
Even if it's not in the ordinance?
Even if it's not in the ordinance. As long as the public gets notice that that's an issue that will be discussed at the public hearing.
So what is the substantive change? That was our whole substantive change we talked about.
No, there's another change in this one.
What is it?
It was addressing the issue that Mr. Petrie brought up in his email that he sent to us.
Where is it addressing it?
I think it's the last whereas.
Last whereas?
That's correct.
There were some concern that by doing this, we were designating it as long-term commercial significant land, which is like we do the 100,000 acres of ag land, and we didn't want to make that.
Or commercial forestry.
Right.
Okay.
So there was a change since this morning.
Okay.
All right, so your motion was to hold. Do you still want to do that?
I want to, but I'm not going to get the votes, so I'm, yeah, go ahead and introduce it. I don't think it's...
So you're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing my motion, and I'm not going to make the motion to go ahead with the hearing, but I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so there's not a motion on the table. Mr. Brown?
So I just did a quick scan of both the RCWs, and there's nothing that stands out about the management, the control of the management plans.
What does that mean?
It means I tried to answer the question by looking at the RCWs, and I couldn't.
But hopefully the lawyers will in the next couple of weeks.
It's RCW 8433-1407, A, B, and C, which gives the assessor the option of requiring a timber management plan for forest land, for applications to classify land as designated forest land.
8434, what?
8433-1407, A, B, and C.
I suggest that we don't try to figure this out up here this evening, that the lawyers do it before the hearing.
In three different scenarios.
A, B, and C. Well, the problem is, though, if we only look at a part of it, A, B, there might be another section there that can address, sometimes when something doesn't say anything, you can do, you can do it. And I'm not sure, just because, because that's what I'm getting, I'm getting the understanding from what you just said, that it's saying, it doesn't say, or maybe it was what council...
Mr. Crawford?
So the, it sounds like where we're headed is no action tonight. Is this to be added to the introduction items and part of our acceptance of the introduction items at the end of the meeting? Is that, and we'll take no action now?
Well, we didn't make that, oh, was it already on for introduction?
No, we will add it.
No, see, it takes a motion. Somebody had to make a motion. We haven't made a motion yet.
Why don't we just do that at the time of introductions?
Not, just not do it at all.
All right, so we don't have to do anything based on the public hearing. We'll just wait till introduction and add this. Is that the wishes of the council? Seeing no hands, I think we can move on to the next public hearing. I hope that was as clear to everybody as it was to me. Next hearing is an ordinance allowing marijuana production, this ought to clear things up, processing and retailing on an interim basis as authorized by the Washington State Initiative 502. And I'm going to open the public hearing. There's no one signed up. Does anybody want to talk to us about the marijuana ordinance?
I thought that's why George was...
I'm going to close the public hearings. What's the wishes of the council?
I move approval.
This is just extending our existing ordinance. Okay, Mr. Mann has moved approval. Any other discussion?
I'd just like verification, there's no changes from the previous interim? Is that correct?
Here's our pot guy.
Nick Smith. That's correct. Thanks.
Same ordinance as previously. All right, any other discussion? I guess we're ready for roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes. Onto our last public hearing, a resolution authorizing the sale of tax title property by negotiation, request 2014-01. I am going to open the public hearing. No one has signed up. Is there anybody here to talk about this tax title sale? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
So move.
Mr. Brown has moved the resolution. Any other discussion?
Let me see if I got anything marked here.
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're going to move on to our open session. This is where the public each gets three minutes to talk to us about anything you want to. You can come down in line up, you'll get a warning at 30 seconds, and if your name's more complicated than Smith or Jones, if you can spell your last name for us, that'd be great. So I'm going to open the public session. Anybody want to speak to us this evening? Ms. Harris?
I wanted to talk about a subject that pertains to the budget, and I wanted to bring it up early, so it wouldn't be difficult. In the past, I've tried to get information on public funds that are being used to control or kill wildlife on public land in the county, and that information's buried pretty deep, and it's hard to get to. And I know, a couple of years ago, I issued a public records request, and I got nothing back, and I had to go back and say, well, what about this program? And, oh, yeah, and that stuff, that just shows you how deep that stuff is buried. So I know that we do an annual starling control program. I know that we do, or we have done a beaver control program, and I know that different departments, mainly the Parks Department, will take sort of an ad hoc action to exterminate animals that it deems to be a nuisance as the event happens. So wildlife is a public asset, and I think that the public has a right to know how its wildlife is being managed, and it should be done transparently, and one of the best ways to see that is through the budget. So I'm asking the executive and the council members to try to assist me in that, and I just want to voice concerns about the starling control program again. We do this every year without any proof that it's effective. The evidence we have in general, not specific to Watcom County, indicates it's not effective. You know, those of you who are working on Lake Watcom issues know you've been told with regards to Asian clams, well, you can't eradicate them, they're invasive species. Once they're established, you have to control them. So I'd like to recommend that any money that we're spending towards starling control, which is a matter that is basically better managed individually on the farm through certain practices, be rolled into some sort of account where we start trying to control the Asian clams in Lake Watcom, because I think that's a more pressing need. Thank you.
Thank you, and the budget's supposed to be out Friday, so we can all start looking for that stuff. Anybody else during open session? Mr. Steensma?
You talked about the River Road lease in Finance Committee this afternoon. Are you going to discuss that later on, or is this the time to talk about it?
You can talk about it now.
Now? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Brown and I had a discussion regarding long-term soil conditions, and he brought forward an idea, having a soil test before and after, and I think that if you don't do that, you're not taking into consideration the nitrogen and phosphorus and potassium and magnesium and the zinc and the boron and all that stuff that you can't see just looking at the land. If you would consider there being a giant forest there, and the Melama family has managed that over the years and selectively logged and maintained it, and now if you put that up for lease tomorrow, and somebody says, hey, there's a lot to be had there, I'm going to come in there and clear cut it, and you show up a few days later and say, whoa, what happened here? That's kind of what could happen if you don't do the soil test before and after. So I think that's something that you really should consider.
So you would support that?
I would support what he came up with. It's not perfect, it's not ideal, but it's something that needs to be considered. I don't know how else to word it, but, yeah.
All right.
If I may, while Mr. Steensma is up here, you'd also brought up the point of item four, which was the grazing animals, which I think Dan...
Oh, yes, yes, that's right. It has always had animals grazing on it. It's, the Midwest, they've lost all their animal agriculture, and that is an ideal situation where you have animals rotating through it, and I don't know where that point came from, that you want to prohibit grazing animals on it.
Yeah, that was explained to us this morning. That was a holdover from another lease we had, and our attorneys recommended that that clause be removed.
Okay, great. Oh, John Steensma, thank you.
All right, anybody else? I think George Boggs came to talk to us about farm plans, which was related to that same issue, so if you want to do it now, George, we can get you out of here maybe a little earlier.
Good evening, yes, I do. This is in response to a question by Councilman Brown. Yes, for the record, I'm George Boggs, Executive Director of the Watcom Conservation District. The question propounded to me is, what's the contents of the conservation plan? Would it encompass soil testing? And with regard to that, first off, conservation plans are developed in consultation with the landowner or the operator, so we really look to what are their objectives. One exception to that is if there happens to be statutory requirements about the elements of a plan, such as a dairy nutrient management plan or the county's critical area ordinance plan. But again, harkening back, the motivation for developing a plan is the landowner or the operator, if they don't want to deal with that, it would not be in that conservation plan. So if you were contemplating soil sampling, soil health, then I would suggest that you recommend in the lease that, yes, the operator should have a conservation plan, and if you utilize the nutrient management practice, code 590, there'd be soil testing, it would describe the frequency, it would be congruent with the crops to be planted in rotation. Yes, soil testing's a really good idea. I would reference that practice because it's very detailed, and it would set forth a schedule of how to do that rather than you folks embedding things in a contract that it's a violation of contract, if it wasn't done that way, and is it very meaningful? The other aspect that I would recommend as a council, you know, your... The other aspect that I would recommend as a council, you know, your landlords, and you don't want to be sued, and your council has given you, I'm sure, adequate clauses to protect you against that sort of liability, but you're also holding something for the benefit of your community. So other things that you might consider in that conservation plan would be, well, we don't want any sediment or nutrients or pathogens getting into our water courses, because you're spending a lot of money to protect against that, right? And we made that. So you would, I would suggest, put into that conservation plan that it protects those resource concerns about that.
All right. So the advice from you is, we can write into the, what we want in the conservation plan specifically.
I would set forth, what are the concerns that you have? And then the conservation plan or working with the operator would develop a plan to, to achieve those objectives, in addition to their own.
Right. Ms. Brenner.
Wouldn't you be doing, doing something like that in your, in the farm plan anyway?
No. Basic parameters of a farm plan is that we look at the motivation of the landowner or the operator, and what is it that they want from that? Could be wildlife protection, it could be irrigation management, crops. It does not have to be incorporated into that, just because.
So, so when you do a concert, when you guys help with a conservation plan, I thought it was to protect soils and to protect runoff from, you know?
Yeah, I think the, the conservation farm plans you're familiar with are to meet the critical area ordinance to protect critical areas such as surface waters, groundwaters, and wetlands. So those components would be there, but soil health wouldn't of necessity be in a particular plan, and so, again.
Be good to have it in there, for us to put it in there.
That's right. If you were concerned about that runoff.
Can we just say something like, soil health included in the farm plan?
Yes.
Because I don't think we should get into too much detail.
That's right. So if the direction is that they have to have a conservation plan, and it's got to address soil health, that we can provide that.
Mr. Brown.
What prompted my conversation with Mr. Boggs was the, was the, I think, the perception by the council, that a farm plan automatically covers things like the protection of the land. And, and I think what Mr. Boggs is saying is, no, not unless that's specified in the farm plan, and the farm plan is actually implemented.
That's right. That's the critical thing, not only have a farm plan, but actually implement that.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, and I agree with that. I'm not interested in us giving you details of what kind of testing and how we want it done, just the main topics like soil health, that sounds, that sounds bad.
That would be sufficient for us to provide a plan to address that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this issue, you know, we, we weren't voting on this lease this evening, our clerk has recommended that we put it on the agenda, because it wasn't on the agenda for a vote this evening, so the lease will be on the agenda at a future meeting, probably in a couple of weeks, I'm guessing. All right. Anybody else during the open session? Last chance. All right, we're going to close the open session and move on to our regular business. First up is the consent agenda from Finance and Administrative Services.
Mr. Chair, the committee met today, considered all three consent agenda items, recommended unanimously on each one for approval to the full council, and I would move approval on the entire consent agenda.
All right. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda, three items.
Wait a minute. Consent agenda, oh, here it is. Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. Now we're on to Natural Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item before us tonight from Natural Resources Committee, and that is resolution repealing Watcom County Resolution Number 2009 dash zero seven eight, related to previous open space application recommendations. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval to the council, and I would so move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Okay, I do agree with this part, but the other part is going to be, when's that vote? I mean, I thought they were the same thing.
I'm a little confused about the motion. You, you, what did you just move? You moved item number two, and I think the one we're working on is item number one in the committee, is that?
No, he, he moved.
Item number one.
Are there other items? Natural Resources Committee, it's item number one?
Yeah, and I thought you said to terminate the old, that, that was item number two.
I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
It says repeal. Isn't that the same?
Yeah, resolution repealing Watcom County Resolution Number 2009 dash zero seven eight. We're repealing what we did in 2009 on those open space applications.
I see. So ordinance scheduled.
In the talk, the other associated talk this evening was a discussion of forming a joint committee with the city and the county. That was item number one on natural resources.
Okay, again.
All right. Ms. Brenner.
That was today, but not the one, I mean, okay, it's a little confusing. Where, this is to repeal, where's the one about the discussion of forming that? Because I don't support that.
That was item number one under committee discussions.
Right.
And that's scheduled for introduction this evening.
Okay, good.
All right. Everybody clear?
Clear as mud.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. Back to Finance.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. Okay, we had a number of items. The first one was the contract between the county and Wheeler, oh, the first three are about Swift Creek and, and dealing with the issues up there. The first one's a contract between the county and Wheeler Consulting Group for the Swift Creek repository citing and analysis in the amount of $160,000. Committee recommended approval three to zero, and I would so move.
All right. We have the motion in front of us from Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous.
Next item is a contract between the county and Watershed Science and Engineering for the Swift Creek North Fork reroute analysis in the amount of $180,000. Committee recommended approval three to zero, and I would so move.
All right. We have that motion in front of us. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cremmon.
I don't know whether you forgot to mention that we're acting as the.
The flood, yeah, we've got our flood control zone.
Yes.
District Board of Supervisors hats on for that last vote, and for these next two.
Yes. That is all.
Thank you. No. All right, so we have that motion in front of us, with our flood control zone district hats on. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous.
The last one on Swift Creek was an award to the low bidder Trimax Construction Incorporated in entering into a contract for the 2014 Swift Creek Bank Armoring and Sediment Removal in the amount of $443,963. Committee recommended approval three to zero, and I would so move.
All right. We have that motion in front of us, again with our flood hats on. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Next item was a resolution requesting council approval for the remodeling of 509 Gerard Street, 322 North Commercial Street, Civic Building, and 1500 North State Street. The committee requested the addition of whereases that explains the, the bigger budget figures, not only for the purchase, but for what we anticipate will be remodeling costs. And that's in the purple packet we received today. And the executive recommended adding whereas council previously approved a project fund in ordinance 2013 dash oh six oh, the amount of $5,588,884 to purchase and renovate the State Street building. And anyone reading this could deduct the 2.6 million, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the 2.6 million above to figure out what we think there's going to be remodel costs. Same thing, he added a whereas per our request, that it was 2.5 million to fund the Civic Center building renovations, and 135,000 to fund the 509 Gerard Street building. So committee recommended approval of this three to zero, and I would so move, and we're working off the purple adjusted one.
All right. So we have the motion from Mr. Crawford to approve the substitute purple version. Ms. Brenner.
The, it's a resolution, but it's got information in here that has never been voted on by the council, and this particular whereas, whereas by investing in 509 Gerard, 1500 State, County can avoid the extensive repair and renovation costs at the Northwest Annex property while insuring blah, blah, blah. This is very troublesome to me. We have never had a vote on whether we want to avoid extensive repairs, and the longer we wait on that Northwest Annex, the worse it gets. And it seems like it's been a push from the administration to, anytime they've touched it, to make it worse. It's an important building, it's not only a great location, but it's centrally located so that it would serve people for planning, for built, you know, permits and stuff, it would serve people centrally throughout the whole county. Now, we're shoving this all downtown Bellingham, which is not centrally located for the rest of the county. And also, we did not discuss, I don't remember us coming to a conclusion on paying right now for the remodel of the State Street building. What we discussed was working on the, making, finding out what the hazardous waste is there, and fixing it. And now this is all lumped into this, and while it has no force of law, it certainly has an intent, and I don't think it's right to have that whereas in there. So I will move to eliminate that whereas. Whereas number one, two, one, two, three, four, five, whereas number six.
That's in the original one, right?
Well, I think it's in.
Yeah, you gotta work off this, this one here.
It's in the purple one as well.
But I think it's number nine.
That wasn't one that was changed. Okay, it's number nine instead of number six. But, but it, I don't remember, I tried to remove it and commit, well, I asked that somebody remove it and commit, and didn't get any takers, so it's the second to the last whereas in the, in the one we're working off of.
Mr. Crawford.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we had this discussion today in Finance. The executive responded to this concern that the disposition, the ultimate disposition of Smith and Northwest is not been decided, and, and I don't think the, neither the administration nor the council has come up and dealt with that issue yet. I think the point being made in this whereas that has been provided to us by the executive's office is that there are some immediate refurbishments that are needed if we're going to continue using that. And what this action by initiating the remodeling on State Street, Civic Building, and Gerard does, is alleviates the pressure from the deteriorated condition of the building at Smith and Northwest to address that immediately. And I think that it makes sense to have that whereas in here.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, if it said it just the way Mr. Crawford said it, it meant, I would be fine with it. That is not what it says. It says, so the county can avoid the extensive repair and renovation costs, not so we can do it in a more comprehensive way, but just so we avoid it, period. That's not saying that we're going to, you know, look at this as an overall piece by itself. It says we're going to avoid it.
Mr. Cremmon.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend the, the substitute version of this resolution. And, excuse me?
I can withdraw my motion. My motion was to remove that whereas.
Okay, I'll speak against that. But I, well, I won't speak against it if the maker of the, the motion that we're dealing with right now will take this as a friendly amendment. And you can pick your words. I, I actually prefer the word imminent, but some may prefer the word immediate, but my amendment would be to insert the word imminent extensive repair and renovation costs, et cetera.
Well, that was.
Avoid, avoid the imminent or immediate, whichever you prefer. Whatever the, I, I'm going to offer imminent.
Well, imminent, to me, makes it sound like the repairs are imminently needed, so.
They are.
I don't know.
That's what we were told. That we're going to postpone the imminent repairs while we do these other refurbishments in these other buildings.
Well, my problem is you, you postpone the imminent needed repairs, and the building is going to get further.
But that's a fact. I mean, it, that's a, it's a fact. And, I mean, I'm only doing this actually to, to satisfy or satiate your.
I have to try to shut me up before.
No, no, I, to try to address the concern that you have, and, and.
How about this?
Yes.
The county can avoid doing the extensive repair and renovation immediately, doing it at this time. Doing it, yeah, doing it.
You just insert the word, if you, if you prefer the word immediate, you say, avoid the immediate extensive repair and renovation cost. In fact, delete the word the, just void, include after the word, avoid imminent extensive repair and renovation costs.
It's better than what's here.
So that's, that, that's what my.
All right.
My friendly amendment would.
I'll take that as a friend, I'm just going to vote against the whole thing, but I will take that as.
So instead of removal of the whole whereas, we've now inserted the word imminent in that place, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we, I think we, I, she, she seemed to prefer the word immediate, so I altered, I altered my friendly amendment to read, avoid immediate, et cetera.
All right. So that's the motion in front of us?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now we have the whole resolution in front of us. Ms. Brenner.
I really appreciated what Councilmember Cremmon just did. I'm still going to vote against it, because I don't like the tone of this at all about, you know, we're going to, we're going to destroy it, we're going to, you know, tear it down, we're going to do, it's all in there, and it's not, it's not even, it's very obvious, so I'm not going to support it. Plus, I don't think we should be talking about doing a remodel of State Street till we get a better understanding of what the hazardous waste is there, and what we're going to have to do to clean it up. We may decide it's such a mess there that we don't want to spend the money. And I, and that was my understanding when the council majority first passed the green light on buying State Street, was that first we were going to figure out what the situation is about hazardous waste before we made any further decisions. I remember that. Now it's like it's all in one, hazardous waste and remodel and do the whole thing. You know, it's not too late to get rid of the property if it's not, if it's got extensive hazardous waste.
All right, so we have the whole resolution in front of us. Mr. Mann.
I just wanted to comment, because I think this is actually a pretty major decision that we're, we're making. We're talking about a lot of county assets and reorganizing locations of departments, and spending money to renovate buildings. And I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good plan, it's an expensive plan. I have really been struggling with it, though, because, not because I love the Northwest Annex building the way Ms. Brenner does, but because we have some buildings that are usable, and we're going to spend a lot of money to remodel them in, in ways that don't necessarily feel super urgent or in the most cost-effective manner. So I, I've been struggling with it also, because I agree bringing the planning department into the city will be very efficient for hopefully increasing the speed with which people can get permits when they're, when they're deserved, but also make it more effective for county departments to work together. But it's also going to create a lot of extra driving for people and coming into downtown Bellingham. And so I've really been, been struggling with this whole deal, because this is a long-term decision that we're making. And I'm, I'm probably going to support it, and the reason is because I haven't come up with a better idea. And I think at this point, as long as we've been talking about this, that would be my job, to have an alternative, and, and I don't. And we're talking about big buildings and big needs and a long-range plan, and I really credit the administration and the executive for, for coming up with this, because it is a, it is a good plan. I just wish we could spend less money and not renovate buildings that essentially are functioning very well as office buildings already.
Mr. Cremmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In a perfect world, I, you know, I too would like to see a location where the Northwest Annex currently is, to be, you know, the place where we would continue to perform planning and development services to the people of Watcom County. But the reality is, if we choose to. the reality is, if we choose to remain at that site, the fact is, we would have to demolish that building and construct a new facility. With that, during my administration and during the current administration, uh, there's been no departure from that mindset. I mean, we've done the numbers, we've looked at the, and this is over a decade-long timeframe or more, and that particular building is not suitable for any, anything even near intermediate term for providing a housing for the Planning and Development Services Department. So, I, I think, you know, a lot of research and a lot of number crunching has been, has been done on, on this issue. Yes, I, I agree with Councilmember Mann in terms of the location. I, I think it is a better location than, than, you know, the current proposal, but all things considered, I think it's really the only viable way to, to get everything done as efficiently as possible and, and look, and be mindful of the taxpayers' pocketbooks and wallets. And so, I, I'm gonna support this, but I, I do wanna express my disappointment that we're not gonna venture, you know, we're not gonna be able to continue to provide planning and development services to, you know, the people of Watcom County at the, at the location where the Northwest Annex currently is.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, you can find numbers and people to tell you anything you wanna hear. That building is solid. It needs a lot of remodeling and upgrading, but I have seen buildings in Watcom County, downtown Bellingham, that are structurally very similar, and they have, they've actually made those things that we all go, ooh, ah, we don't like them now, like the HVAC thing hanging over your head. They've made them into beautiful accessories without even moving them. And this whole attitude that the, the building is, you know, it's not even, that's ridiculous. I have never seen any extensive, and not recently for sure, any extensive research by a third party that we, that we have a little faith in. And if I'm supposed to listen to what staff says, well, staff was the one, every time they've, they've done their improvements out there, it's made it worse. So, I don't necessarily trust what some of the staff say, and I also think there's a push coming from the top about what to do where and what to get rid of. I think it's, it's very cavalier without us going into an in-depth kind of study on that Northwest Annex before doing this. I, I just don't think it's appropriate. I also think it's really inappropriate to talk about doing the remodel on the State Street building before we even know what kind of hazardous waste we're talking about. And how many times is the Civic Building gonna come to us for a remodel that they then have to get rid of stuff that they already remodeled? I mean, nothing is being done in a cohesive way, and I, I think this is, we're really asking for trouble by doing it this way. So, I, I would think, I'm surprised, I would think at the very least, the council would wanna see a plan, let's say for the Civic Building, that talks about step one, step two, step three, step four, instead of we're gonna do this stuff and, oh, now we have to, you know, tear it down because that didn't work out. I just don't, I think we're just throwing money at all these things, and I don't think it's a good idea. And nobody seem, well, and nobody seems to ask for way more specifics on all this. I don't think we should be agreeing to do this. I think we should do a resolution to explore it and get those numbers and get stuff, rather than, oh, go ahead and do it.
All right, so we have the resolution in front of us, reflected in the purple substitute version. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Brenner opposed.
And, Mr. Chair, the final item in finance was the ordinance amending, ordinance 2013-3 to establish a project fund for the new jail project. That's a little deceptive title because it refers to an ordinance we passed a long time ago to establish the fund. The fund's been there for years. What we're doing is amending that, and it's adding about $800,000, I'm sorry, $900,000 to that project fund. Just to be clear, the amount was $825,000 for the DLR group for design work and $75,000 to fund a potential future contract with a group that specializes in advising on bond issues and will assist the county in making sure that any bonds that are issued or making good decisions at least, I guess there's no absolute certainty in the world of bonds, but that we go in with a bond recommendation to the voters that is as secure and has the best benefit for the county in terms of things like interest rates and that sort of stuff. So, those two items total $900,000 and, just over $90887. The committee recommended approval of this three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to approve the ordinance in front of us from Mr. Crawford. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Um, I support this, but I did wanna make, ask one question, and I don't know who the person would be to answer it, but when the DLR group is going to be putting toge- this is my understanding, I wanna make sure I'm right, is gonna be putting together design work and all kinds of things that are specifically including a lot of the concerns that have been raised by members of the public. Is that, I'm getting a shaking head up, yes.
Tyler Schroder. Uh, yeah, in general, the answer is yes to that. The DLR group is, is hired by the contract that was signed two weeks ago to facilitate this schematic design and the civil engineering for the, for the jail plans that were done through the EIS process, which-
Okay.
Used, and, and listened to all of those thoughts.
Because we got an email today about, hold off, we, we don't know what we're getting it, and I thought the whole purpose of the DLR contract is to get that put together so people do know. Okay.
All right, motion for this ordinance is in front of us.
Wait a second, wait a minute, he had one under.
Sorry.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Ready for roll call.
Rudd Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Sam Crawford.
Yes.
Pete Cremmon.
Yes.
Ken Mann.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, next-
I'll move recommend, or, I'll move approval.
The council dates. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner, you knew it.
Just quickly, I'm not gonna support it. I think if we're gonna have them, you know, without having them every week, first and third, second or fourth, something that's easier for the public to be able to understand that, what, what week is what, and the way we have it, it's every other week except when it's not, and I just don't think that that's in the public interest.
All right, Mr. Brown.
A question for the Madam Clerk. You, you gave two versions of this. Is this the one that accommodates the NACO conference or doesn't?
Right.
Okay, and that's why we've only got one in favor. Yeah, okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Brenner opposed. Next, executive appointments. Request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Kathleen Harrigan and Russ Sapienza to the Developmental Disabilities Board. As the council member on that board, I had the privilege of interviewing these two folks. They're both very well-qualified, and I would move confirmation. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Reed Parker to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Move approval.
Crawford's moved approval. Any discussion?
I'd just like his statement on his application that his wife says that his perfect job would be bike evangelist. This seems like a good place to start.
All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We're on to our introduction items.
Move acceptance and add, Dana, help me, what are we adding?
The green sheet.
The ordinance terminating open space timberland classification and consolidating timberland classification, but designated forest land classification and declaring land previously classified as timberland to be designated forest land.
All right, and the public notice for that's also gonna include some language talking about forest, the potential of forest plans.
You bet.
Was there an item that was gonna be withdrawn from introduction tonight?
Um, number five. Was that one withdrawn?
Four and five?
Oh, right.
The CIP, well, sorry, capital improvement-
CIP and the, the rezone.
The rezone was spelled.
Held in committee.
Okay, so four and five were held in committee.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, amend my motion to accept introduction items one through three, as well as the open space timberland item.
All right, Mr. Brown.
And do we also need to introduce the resolution for the River Road?
Uh, the River Road, do we need to reintroduce that, Dana, or can we?
I don't know, it's just gonna go straight onto the council.
Okay, all right. So, we have the introduction items in front of us. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Those pass six to one with Councilmember Brenner opposed. Committee reports, anything from any of the other committees? Natural Resources?
Um, we did talk today about the, um, well, no, it's, it's in the introduction, so the, as far as the joint with the city, as far as open space, so there'll be nothing else for more.
Okay, anything from Public Works?
Yeah, um, we, we had an interesting discussion on the Bertrand Creek Estate off-site mitigation, and, huh, how do I say it as politically correct as possible? We screwed up, the county screwed up. So, we're gonna try, oh, too bad John left. I wonder if anybody got to talk to him, because we were gonna talk to the property owners who are farming in that area. Public Works engineer Joe Rutan came up with an alternative that may solve the problem, and we want him to talk to the neighbors and come back to us and see if that's gonna work with them. But stay tuned, that was the one where they didn't do the shoulders as wide as they were suppo-, as wide as the hearing examiner had put in his final decision. Then, we, okay, we discussed the construction program and the six-year capital improvement program, and we're still a little confused too on some of the six-year capital improvement program, and stay tuned for more of that.
All right. Executive Laus, did you have something to add to that?
I was just gonna say that I did send an email off to John Steenman this afternoon requesting a meeting, and I also talked with him outside of the chambers here just a few minutes ago. He and the neighbors that wish to engage on it are going to meet with Joe Rutan, Sandy Peterson, Tyler, and I in the next two to three weeks to go over the options and hopefully come up with a suitable resolution, and I'll keep the council informed of what the results of that meeting are. Yes.
Great.
Other committees, planning?
We wrestled with a rezone off of Slater Road, and we're gonna, we held that in committee. We wanted some more information, and I'll let you know hopefully in two weeks what we come up with.
All right, was there anything else in finance?
Uh, just at the River Road property, we added the clause that it would be a auction, a public auction, rather than a sealed bid process, so. Other than that, I don't think so.
Okay, anybody have any other items? Ms. Brenner.
Okay, Sustainable Connections held a tour of native vegetation portions on, on the sides of the roads in downtown Bellingham, and they were really amazing in areas. They, they took out the asphalt or took out the concrete and actually put in some plants that seemed to be so far thriving, and they did it in a really neat way where they, the certain businesses will agree to take care of these areas. And so, I'm gonna schedule for Public Works. I would love to have Public Works people there. One of the businesses said he would be really grateful to talk to us about the Public Works part of their interaction with the city, and I thought that would be really nice for us to figure out. Maybe we'll do that in parks of the county. I just thought it was a win-win, wonderful idea. Then, also, there was a meeting the other night at Sem-, at the Semiamu Park regarding the stormwater mess that, you know, that we've been talking about for quite a while, and I can't say there was resolution on it, but Craig, Craig was there. He was the one who actually gave the presentation, and 2020 Engineering is gonna be, and, and I feel very confident with them is gonna be putting together some kind of a plan to solve that stormwater problem that came off of Cyries property. Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay, so it was very, the presentation was great. BP had an open house, and for anybody who really likes to look at tools, any tool you have, they have the same tools and they're a thousand times bigger. They had this fuse that was 400 bucks for this fuse. It's like probably this big. And it was the most, I'm not a big, you know, tool person, but I was really amazed at their tools out there, because that's what we saw a lot of. We, we went, we were invited to the railcar response meeting that was held at, at the emergency management office, and that was very helpful. And, let's see, oh, Kendall Watch had a meeting last night, and they, that's a group that I hope people get a little involved in and go to some of their meetings. They had someone from the Health Department talking about hazardous materials from methamphetamine. They had the, my favorite, I have to say, was the presentation by Superior Court Judge Snyder regarding the drug court. You know, I always feel like I'm really up on stuff like drug court. It was amazing what he went into, and he's such a big softie about, about so many things. I would love to have him come to us and make a presentation. I couldn't believe how involved it is. I've gone to their graduations, but I did not know how involved that whole process is and how wonderfully the, the people, they have to do a lot when they're in the program, but they're treated so amazingly respectfully. So, I was just real impressed with it. So, he was there, and there was a presentation from our, our res-, not resident, but our area deputy out there. It's, it's amazing. They get, they almost got more than I even know, so I think it's very worthwhile to have some of these presenters come to us and make the same presentations.
All right, I'm never clear on my agenda here what the difference between other items and council member updates is, and I think we just mix the two together. Are there any other council member updates? Let's start at that end. Any?
I'm fine this week.
Everything's great.
I'm done.
All right. Any other business for the good of the order? Seen nothing, we're adjourned.